Hammond City Council Meeting is now called to order. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Declaration given by Councilman Markovich?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Talk about surprises at the last minute. I mean, a lot of times I'm speechless. And we're gathering here today to conduct business. We all know that what we try to do is for the best interest of the elected officials and as well as our constituents and taxpayers. Although sometimes that may not seem that way, but we hope that in our guidance and our wisdom and with God's help that we would accomplish anything and everything that pertains to the function of the city of Hammond, that all of us be working together, God's things, pray.
Amen. Number two on the agenda is roll call. Roll call vote.
Markovich, here. Spitali, here. Vanez, Calwinski, here. Salinas, here. Poland, here. Opinker, here. Henosa, here.
Higgs, here. Let the record reflect nine are present, zero are absent. Next on the agenda is reading of the minutes. Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinker.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from eight twenty-two, two thousand eleven. Second.
Motion by Councilman Opinker, second by Councilman Spitali. Do we accept the minutes dated eight twenty-two, two thousand eleven? Is there any discussion on the reading of the minutes? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion passes. Next on the agenda is number four, approval of claims. Approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims beginning dated August twenty-third, two thousand eleven and ending with claims dated September seventh, two thousand eleven, claims number four-zero-seven-eight through claim number four-four-nine-zero. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilwoman Poland. Do we accept claims dated August seventeenth, two thousand eleven through September seventh, two thousand eleven, but council meeting scheduled on September twelfth, two thousand eleven, starting with claim number forty-seventy-eight and ending in claim number forty-four-ninety? If there any discussion on the claims? Any discussion on the claims? Any discussion on the claims? Roll call vote on the claims.
Markovich, yes. Spitali, yes. Vanez, yes. Calwinski, yes. Salinas, yes. Poland, yes. Opinker, yes. Henosa, yes. Higgs, yes.
Let the record reflect nine yeses and zero noes. Motion passes.
Bless you.
Number five is a public hearing. Number five, public hearing.
Item A, ordinance eleven dash twenty-eight, the two thousand twelve civil city budget proposal. Item B, ordinance eleven dash thirty, the two thousand twelve police and fire salary ordinance. Item C, ordinance eleven thirty-one, the two thousand twelve redevelopment budget proposal ordinance.
Anyone wishing to speak on these three items may do so by stepping to the podium and speak to these items and these items on.
George Stoya. Um, I don't know really all that's in the budget. What I'm more concerned about is we haven't heard anything from you folks about the status of this budget and what you guys think about it. I mean, what I think about it, that's one thing. You guys are making the decisions and we haven't heard anything either in the press or on this floor. And I was hoping to persuade, induce, or otherwise encourage you guys to speak a little bit about what you guys think about this budget. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on item eleven dash twenty-eight, two thousand twelve civil city budget proposed ordinance? RB, two thousand twelve police and fire salary ordinance, eleven dash thirty. RC, two thousand twelve redevelopment budget proposed ordinance, eleven dash thirty-one. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Public hearing is now closed. Number six on the agenda is communications. I have a communication from Donna L. Durn. It says, "August twenty-third, two thousand eleven, Honorable Thomas McDermott, Mayor, City of Hammond, fifty-nine twenty-five Cayman Avenue, Hammond, Indiana, four-six-three-two O. Read the City of Hammond, NSP Housing Complaints, sixty-two twenty-nine, Reverend Burns Drive. Dear Mayor McDermott, I'm writing you this letter to you in hopes to get some clarification about the City of Hammond Neighborhood Stabilization Program. I've been a resident of Hammond since two thousand and three, when I purchased my first home at fifty-four-ten Walnut Street, a small bungalow with three bedrooms, one on each floor, just right for me alone. Two years later, I become a single parent, a son born with asthma, which meant that I needed to keep him in the same bedroom with me throughout his infancy. He is now five years old and needs his own bedroom. However, because of past illnesses, I want this bedroom at least on one side, on the same floor as myself. July two thousand and ten, I moved into a two-bedroom apartment with hopes to save for a down payment on a home more conducive to my family. On July seventh, two thousand and eleven, while searching for available homes within my price range online, I came across a house located at sixty-two twenty-nine Reverend Burns Drive, rehabbed by the City of Hammond. I called my real estate agent, Ms. Lester Cole of McCully Realtors, and requested that she make arrangements for me to see it. On July eighth, I had the opportunity of viewing it and immediately asked her to contact the sellers and submit an offer for me for a hundred and five thousand dollars. Ms. Cole related to me that the seller told her that I needed to make the full offer of the asking price of one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And I will be eligible to receive a twenty percent down payment per the...
As soon as possible.
I complained with, complied with that. On July nineteenth, two thousand and eleven, I submitted my free approval letter from the bank, my F Y twenty-ten taxes, three pay stubs, and five hundred dollars earnest money. On July nineteenth, two thousand and eleven, Ms. Cole stated that all was submitted immediately. Then there were three, three-week waiting period. Ms. Cole called Dennis Rodoski, NSP manager, and his assistant, Christine. We told her that we, we were told that we was all taking care of his mother, who was gravely ill. She passed away during the period. After he came back, Mr. Rodoski called for additional tax papers stating that it looked as if I made too much money. My AGI was sixty-two thousand one-one-one. I have the understanding, according to HUD guidelines, one hundred and twenty, medium of the area income is sixty-two thousand dollars. The first week in August, Dennis Rodoski called me when he returned to work and informed me that he was sorry for the period of time it took getting back to me, but that I had made too much money and that because my child support, which I never received, I also confused because of my earnest money check was never cashed. My pleading closing, pending closing date was August twenty-second, and my bank was calling trying to see what the holdup was so they, so that they could proceed with their part of the closing process. I asked for the meeting with Dennis by my agent, and she stated that he will not call her back nor answer her emails. I haven't signed the mutual release agreement, nor will I, until I get a better answer from Mr. Rodoski, or someone from the office. There has been too many incidences throughout the entire process. I don't think this is fair, nor was it professional for me to have been told to take the HUD class right away, have my bank run my credit, accept my offer, and then turn me down. I want to live in Hammond. I could have continued searching for another house while waiting all the time, all of this time. Can you please look into this issue? Thank you for your cooperation and consideration. Donna L. Durn. C.C. De Field Tyler, Executive Director, Plan and Develop, Dennis Rodoski, NSP Manager, Jimmy Lambert, President of Redevelopment, and Anthony Higgs, Hammond Council President. Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland.
I received a letter tonight. I picked it up from one of my constituents on Indy Lee Parkway, and she wanted me to read this tonight to the Hammond City Council and Mayor McDermott. My friend Donna Marcinsky and I, Jan Maurice, specifically joined the fitness center for the water aerobics. Our first class was in the morning, and we felt that the instructor was unqualified. The next class at twelve forty-five was great. We came to know the instructor as Ruth Emily LaCaz, and she gave great classes. Some people have health issues like me, and Ruth works with us accordingly, which helps us to work out correctly for our individual needs. I was shocked and disappointed that she was let go. When we got in the pool last Wednesday, September seventh, the ladies in the pool were told that Ruth had quit. The ladies were disbelieving and surprised that she would quit with no notice. Also, they know Ruth as an ethical professional. When the truth came out to me, I was appalled to learn that as loyal members of the fitness center, we had been lied to. This is a terrible betrayal to Ruth as a staff member, also a betrayal to us members who now have no teacher at the fitness center. I know from talking with other fitness center members that several letters have been presented to the city on Ruth's behalf. Please reconsider this lady's status with the city, prove to all the fitness center members and our associates that she care about our needs. Sincerely, Jan Maurice.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland.
I have a letter from the NRA. I had a got, received a copy that was addressed to the mayor, and copies were given to the council, and this is dated August twenty-fifth. Dear Mayor McDermott, an article entitled Counsel Defeats Gun Ordinance, City Exposed to Potential Lawsuits, posted August twenty-third, two thousand and eleven on HammondDaily.net, was recently brought to the attention of the NRA. The article outlines your allegedly hostile response to a proposal from Councilwoman Poland to amend your city's firearm ordinances to comply with state law. The NRA has nationwide expertise with firearm laws and works closely with the author of the law in question. The law prohibits political subdivisions from regulating the ownership possession carrying transportation, registration, transfer, and storage of firearms, ammunition, and firearm accessories, as well as commerce and taxation of firearms, firearm ammunition, and firearm accessories. The City of Hammond is a political subdivision of Indiana as defined in IC three-five-two-tw-... thirty-eight, subjecting it to the preemptive authority of IC thirty-five forty-seven dash one-one dot one, as IC, et cetera. Any provision of an ordinance, measure, enactment, rule, or policy or exercise of propriety, authority of a political subdivision of an employee or agent of a political subdivision acting in an official capacity enacted or undertaken before or after June thirty, two thousand and eleven, and that pertains to or affects the matters listed in Section Two of this chapter is void. It is our hope that this letter will help you better understand the preemptive authority and provide you with the opportunity to publicly declare the city will cease enforcement of the violating ordinances while the council works to revoke them. Under no circumstances do we support or endorse maintaining the violating ordinances in the city code of ordinances. Failure to take prompt action while you wait for your legislature to explain why it's okay will result in suit by the NRA on behalf of our members in Hammond under the organizational standing provision contained in IC thirty-five forty-seven eleven-one-six. Sincerely, James Faranowski, Associate Legislative Counsel with the NRA.
We see the correspondence from the Center of Transformation of Waste Technology. It's dated August twenty-sixth, two thousand and eleven, Mr. Anthony Higgs, Third District, Hammond City Council, second floor, fifty-nine twenty-five Cayman Avenue, Hammond, Indiana. Hammond Water Reuse Project, a model of efficiency and effectiveness. Dear Mr. Higgs, in corroboration with the USP EPA under the Great Lakes Restoration invocation grant, the Center of Transformation of Waste Technology, the Center is hosting a workshop from one to four Friday, September the sixteenth, two thousand and eleven, at the IBEW Hall, seventeen hundred Mississippi Street, Millville, Indiana. Presentation of the process of multiple environmental and economic benefits derived from the Hammond Water Reuse Project will be offered. The Hammond Sanitary District Manager, Michael T. Erger, Ph.D., will host the program. Topics of discussion include the benefits to the crew when discharge in Lake Michigan are eliminated, the use of nutrients contained in the discharge as rescue benefit landowners at rate payers while boosting the regional economy. Examples of other successful no discharge systems is evident that the concept is valuable. Details of contractual agreements between landowners and the Hammond Sanitary District. The Center has designated an alternative invitation that conserves multiple industrial water supplies that replenishes groundwater in Lake Michigan Basin. Water reuse technology has been successfully demonstrated in variety of dry, geographical locations throughout the United States and within rural and urban and suburban community settings. The project will realize the benefits of reclaiming and reusing more than three million pounds per year of plant nutrients. As the project has interfaced to, the positive steps have been taken to ensure this substantial improvement solution that projects preserve and conserve Lake Michigan as vital resources. It also provides long-term economic development opportunity. The project has earned support from USDA and resumes confer- compensation in Development Council along with the professional organization. We look forward to discussing the multiple municipal and economical implications of the project and how it serves as a responsible model for effective nutrition reuse, environmental, provincial, and economic stability. And that's from the Center of Transformation of Waste Technology. And I received a correspondence from the Family Compass, the Hammond City Council. Attention, Anthony Higgs, President, fifty-nine twenty-five Cayman Avenue, Hammond, Indiana. Dear President Higgs, I'm sending you this letter to introduce you to Family Compass, a local nonprofit licensed child placement agency that provides quality foster care services in Lake County. I have enclosed a letter, our agency brochure, for your review. One of our main roles as foster parent advisors is to look for families who are interested in opening their hearts in homes to children who have been abused and neglected. I am asking for your assistance in identifying opportunities with your staff and our in the community to present information about fostering. I will be conducting, contacting you in the near future to follow up on this letter and discuss any ideas you may have as to how we can partner in this cause. Thank you in advance for your consideration in helping us find safe, nurturing, and loving families for children in need. Sincerely, Jerry May Martinez, Foster Parent Advisor. Any other communications?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Letter from the RBA. Operations Committee Recommendation, Service Eliminations and Reductions, Red, Green, and Brown Routes, August two thousand and eleven. Staff has been working on any option that does not include eliminating and/or reducing routes as they currently exist. Within the last month, there have been some notable changes in policy that the staff believes can truly benefit the Regional Bus Authority, RBA, and preserve the services for the ridership. The Northwest Regional Planning Commission and the RBA staff are working toward resolution of the Use of Congestion Management Air Quality Funds, CMAQ, until confirmation is made of the ability to use CMAQ funds to preserve existing operations, the staff cannot program these dollars into budget scenarios. CMAQ dollars historically can only be used for new route operations, new equipment, bike ways, intersections, clean air technology, and diesel retrofits and E-eighty-five vehicles. CMAQ dollars are typically usable for one to three years, but in this case, these dollars are needed immediately to preserve transit operations in two thousand and twelve. Also, CMAQ dollars are eighty-twenty revenues per NERC and the Local Operators Committee. The use of CMAQ dollars also requires cash on hand to prepay for all services and then seek reimbursement through a two-to-six-month process. The RBA staff has reviewed the testimony and comments received as part of the public hearing process, has reviewed ridership data, has researched budgetary options, has discussed with NERC and representatives from the Federal Transportation Administration, FTA, and the use of CMAQ funds and CMAQ policy changes, and has had discussions with the Operations Committee of the RBA and therefore recommends the following. Number one, the brown route to be eliminated. Number two, the half-hour commuter service on the both red and green routes be eliminated. Three, that all fixed route changes above are effective at the close of business on Friday, September thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, unless and until additional revenues can be found to preserve these route operations. The RBA to fund one more year of operation dollars for South Lake County Community Service, Inc., demand responses services in the Griffith area at twenty thousand dollars starting on September first, two thousand and eleven, and submitted this seventeenth day of August, two thousand and eleven, by the Operations Committee to the full RBA Board of Directors as amended by the committee on August ninth, two thousand and eleven, from a recommendation presented to the committee by both Mr. Brown and Mr. Dahlmeier.
Any other communications? I received the communications from New Zion Temple, praising the world with his glory, says Mr. Higgs, Hammond City Council. Dear Mr. Higgs, on Saturday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven, New Zion Temple Baptist Church U ministry will present its fifth annual fall fashion show at New Zion Temple Church, nine twenty-sixth Moore Street, Hammond, Indiana. We ask that your support are used by purchasing tickets at the cost of fifteen dollars. Your support will be acknowledged and printed program. If you have any questions, you may contact the church administrative lines. Thank you in advance for your support. Sincerely, Brandon A. Jacobs, pastor. Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland.
I'd like to read Executive Order eleven oh-three.
Executive Order eleven oh-three.
Whereas Chapter one thirty-two, Section one thirty-two oh-seven-three of the Hammond Municipal Code regulates deadly weapons in civil city public buildings in the City of Hammond, and whereas, effective July one, two thousand and eleven, Public Law one fifty-two, Senate Enrolled Act number two ninety-two amended the Indian state law which permitted a local unit of government to regulate firearms, ammunition, and firearm accessories, removing a local unit's ability to do so where such regulation conflicts with state law. And whereas, Mayor Thomas S. McDermott, the mayor and executive of the City of Hammond, by his executive authority holds that to the extent that federal or state law supersedes local ordinance, that local ordinance is void and unenforceable, and therefore, by executive order, the mayor decrees that neither the Hammond Police Department, EMA, nor any city employee shall enforce Hammond Municipal Code, Section one thirty-two oh-seven-three, or otherwise act contrary to Indiana state law. This executive order shall supersede any previously established ordinance, handbook, or policy of the City of Hammond. This executive order shall go into effect on date of signing, so ordered the seventh day of September two thousand and eleven, Tom McDermott, Mayor.
I'll wait for the questions on that. I'm still in this clarity on that ordinance, that executive order that was signed. Any other communications? Any other communications? Communication is now closed. Number six on the, seven on the agenda is committee reports. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinker.
Under Streets and Alley's, I'd like to bring out ordinance eleven thirty-three for third and final passage.
Any other committee reports?
Chairman.
Councilman Calwinski.
Counselors of whole will bring out eleven dash thirty-two and eleven dash thirty-four.
Any other committee reports? So we got eleven dash thirty-three coming out, Counselors of whole, Streets and Alley's. Got eleven thirty-two and eleven thirty-four coming out, Counselors of whole. Any other committee reports? Any other committee report? Committee reports is now closed. Number eight on the agenda is ordinances on third reading and final passage. Third reading and final passage.
Ordinance number eleven dash thirty-two, sponsored by Councilman Calwinski, and ordinance declaring dormant and unused funds, amending existing funds and creating new funds.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Calwinski.
Move for final passage of eleven dash thirty-two.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Calwinski, second by Councilman Opinker, that we pass eleven dash thirty-two on this third and final reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Calwinski.
This is an ordinance that was brought forward by the Controller's Office to clean up ordinance, to clean up and to remove old funds that are currently not active and to create two new funds. Thank you.
Is there any discussion on eleven dash thirty-two? Eleven dash thirty-two. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call vote on eleven dash thirty-two.
Markovich, yes. Spitali, yes. Vanez, yes. Calwinski, yes. Salinas, yes. Poland, yes. Opinker, yes. Henosa, yes. Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes, nine in favor, zero absent.
Ordinance eleven dash thirty-three, sponsored by Councilman Opinker, and ordinance designating the seventy-five through seventy-six-hundred block of Parish Avenue as resident-only parking.
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinker.
Bring this up for third and final reading.
Need you to make the motion.
Make the motion for third and final reading.
Is there a second to the motion? It's been motion by Councilman Opinker, second by Councilman Spitali, that we pass eleven dash thirty...
Three.
Three. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinker.
This area, seventy-five, seventy-six-hundred block of Parish, that's where the vipers practice over by Dowling Park, and for the residents that live over there, they get home from work, and there is nowhere to park for these residents due to the, the parents waiting for their kids to get out of practice. Dowling Park does have a big parking lot where these people can park, so that's why I speak with the residents out in that neighborhood, they're all for residence-only parking, and like I says, the, the parents are gonna just have to park in Dowling Park and walk across the field to go to their children's practices.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion on eleven dash thirty-three? Any other discussion? Roll call vote on eleven dash thirty-three.
Markovich, yes. Spitali, yes. Vanez, yes. Calwinski, yes. Salinas, yes. Poland, yes. Opinker, yes. Henosa, yes. Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes, nine in favor and zero absent.
Ordinance eleven dash thirty-four, sponsored by Councilman Calwinski, and ordinance to establish residential parking only on a portion of one hundred and twentieth street and repealing any ordinances in conflict thereto.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Calwinski.
Move for final passage of eleven dash thirty-four.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Calwinski, second by Councilman Opinker, that we pass eleven dash thirty-four on this last and final reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Calwinski.
I'd like to make the following amendments to eleven dash thirty-four. In the first paragraph, that begins with whereas, at the end of the paragraph where it ends with street and a period, I'd like to take out the period. it ends with street and a period, I'd like to take out the period and add the following. And to designate no parking anytime on the north side of the street from Calumet Avenue west on 120th to the alley. And the second part here to this amendment is in Section 1, after the first sentence that ends with street, the following will happen. Resident-only parking signs and no parking anytime signs shall be placed on the said block and are hereby made permanent. Those are the amendments to this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And by the way, this is being done because it's a hardship to.
I need a second. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Been motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by, who are you first? Councilman Markovich, that we amend in whereas and designated parking after the period in the first section of whereas, and designated parking. And what was the rest of that, Councilman?
And to designate no parking anytime on the north side of the street.
And designated no parking.
West on 120th to the alley, period.
On the north side of the street and what was the rest?
Anytime on the north side of the street from Calumet Avenue west on 120th to the alley.
And the second section would be Section 1, and you're amending in.
Where the second sentence that starts resident-only parking signs, we're adding after signs and.
And no parking signs.
Signs.
And here be permanent? Okay, any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment?
This is being, Mr. Chairman?
Councilman?
This is being done because of hazard in that corner and that intersection because primarily Clark students are always trying to find places to park besides the parking lot, and it creates egress and ingress hazards for the neighborhood without causing accidents there. So we're changing that to make it easier to come in and out of the neighborhood.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Any other discussion on the amendment? Any other discussion on the amendment? Roll call vote on the amendment?
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinkar.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes, nine in favor and zero absent. Now back to the original ordinance, 11-34. Any discussion on 11-34? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call vote on 11-34?
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinkar.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes, nine in favor and zero absent.
President Higgs, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Next on the agenda is introduction of ordinances. There are none tonight, so introduction of ordinances now closed. Next on the agenda is number 10, resolutions. There are none tonight, so resolutions are not closed. Number 11 is new and unfinished business, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinkar.
I'd like to set up a public meeting for ordinance 1129, next council meeting, 9:26 11.
Second.
Think you need to suspend.
No, new and unfinished business.
It's been motion by Councilman Opinkar, second by Councilman Salinas, that we set a public hearing for 11-29 on 9:26 11. Is there any discussion? Any discussion for the public hearing for 11?
Mr. Chairman, what's the title of 1129?
1129 is the salary ordinance.
Salary is in wages.
Salary and wages ordinance. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion passes. New and unfinished business, new and unfinished.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
I'd like to have a letter sent to Street Commissioner Gary Gleason for no littering signs to be posted in all of our parks and on any certain street that he feels necessary. Also, posted on that sign, I'd like to have a fine on that sign also for those caught.
It's been motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Kowinski, that we send a letter to Gary Gleason in regards to placing signs saying no littering.
That is correct.
And any additional locations throughout the city that he feels necessary. And a fine.
Posted on the sign.
Be posted as well on the sign. Is there any discussion on the letter being sent to Gary Gleason?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Mark.
Where are these signs to be placed at?
In the parks for one, he says.
Mr. Chairman, I think since that's park property, that that has to be done through the park board for them to go ahead and make that motion and take care of that.
So would you request that he possibly send a letter to the park?
To the park board requesting that. Because they're the ones in charge of all the parking equipment, I mean, it's the park board.
Would you like to rescind your motion, Councilman?
Can I, Attorney Berger?
Uh-oh.
Park board is.
Is that park department or, I had spoken, where should it go?
Well, I think that the park board is in charge of the parks, but I think it's a city ordinance by the council against littering and all the other things, so that the council does have a role to play.
So from what Attorney Berger just said, I think it's okay for the letter.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything wrong with sending a letter.
Is there any other discussion on sending a letter?
Would a CC to the park board?
To the park board, right.
That would be the, that would be up to the original sponsor.
I'd make amendment to that. CC to the park board.
He wants you to CC the park board. Would you like to CC the park board in regards to that letter?
That's not Kaladee Club.
All right, he's gonna CC the park board as well as Gary Gleason in regards to the signs being posted in our parks and wherever he deems necessary in regards to littering. Was it littering or lauda?
Littering.
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 Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion passes. New and unfinished business, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland.
One of my constituents dropped off a flyer to me this evening for State Joseph Church Las Vegas night. That's this Saturday, September 17th, featuring blackjack, bingo, poker, games of chance, money raffle, door prizes. Food from 5:30 to 8:30, beer, pop wine till midnight, parking in Russell Street Lot with off, west off Homewood Avenue. It's only $10. You can purchase tickets at the door. Again, that's this Saturday, September 17th. You have to start at 5:30.
Thank you, Councilwoman Poland, and I would just like to send out my condolences to the Cheetham family, to the Williams family, to the Short family and their loss of their loved ones, and to the McGee family. Quite a few people passed away this last week, and to the Buck family. So that was five families within my district that lost a loved one this past week, and so my condolences goes out to each and every one of their family members. Also, I would like to personally thank Councilman Markovich for coming out and helping us with the back-to-school 10-year anniversary of our back-to-school giveaway, as well as Clerk Golick for his sponsorship as well. It was a huge success, over 400 students throughout the city came out, and we didn't turn anyone away, although there were a few people that were kind of upset, they, once they got their backpacks, they wanted to change them, and so that's part of the process. We were trying to move the line along and get it, run it smoothly, and so, but all in all, it was a huge success, over 200 hamburgers, 200 hot dogs, and a case of ribs, I mean, a case of chicken wing. I tell you, and all kinds of water, juice, backpacks, everything just fell into play, and it was a huge success, and I just want to personally thank you all for being a part of that, and it's been 10 years doing that. Been doing that before I even came a councilman. It's all about giving back and making sure the kids have something. So I thank you for your help and your sponsorship. New and unfinished business. New and unfinished business.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
In response to Mr. Stoyer's question about under the public hearing for the budget, we had budget hearings for two days, and the controller, he's not here now, I was gonna have him come up, but basically, it's a 2% raise for civilians. I believe 3% was for the Teamsters, I'm not sure, but I know police and firemen was 4%. Everybody's budget was only increased basically to cover the salaries and for perf and for insurance, and a lot of them even cut some of their expenditures, so that's basically what happened with the budget hearings in that respect.
Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinkar.
I'd like to let everybody know that October 1st is gonna be the Hammond Fire Department's open house. It's gonna be held at 6110 Calumet from 10:00 AM to 2:00. There's all kinds of activities for the kids to do, so we'll remind you again at the next council meeting, October 1st.
Thank you, Councilman Opinkar. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. First speaker is Mr. Fletcher. Come on down, you're the next contestant.
Good evening. Can you hear me, or does somebody need to?
They'll help you out there.
Thank you. Good evening. You read a response to the RBA, and I just need to comment on it. As you know, Hammond has two appointees to the RBA. There was 11 of the 21 unappointed, unelected individuals, appointed unelected individuals, and Hammond's two appointees voted to get rid of that brown route after we paid $1.8 million. Now, if you look in the Times, it talked about the buses from Dyer, the luxury liners, the Wi-Fi, you know, the plush seating, the restrooms, and folks, all they want to do is get to Crown Point, and they're not gonna have it. So you have two of Hammond's appointees, the city controller and the city planner, vote to get rid of the service. In the letter Councilman Markovich read, it talked about coverage by South Lake of the Griffith area. What you don't know is that South Lake Executive Director Margot Zapato voted on her own $20,000 contract. Where, and all of anything, is that normal business? Nobody seems to do nothing. And in response to me bringing these issues and, for lack of a better word, excuse me, but raising hell, they get a bogus restraining order against me because I do what's right. So you have them wasting Hammond's money, $1.8 million. You have Hammond's appointees voting to get rid of our service, and our city controller serves as a treasurer, and I said before, you're signing out money on one hand and accepting it on the other. Cook County has nothing on us anymore. We need to change our name to Cook County. It's sad. You know, and with the anniversary of September 11th, I am a West Wing fan, and I found something that really struck me that I'd like to share. More than any time in recent history, America's destiny is not of our own choosing. We did not seek, nor did we provoke and assault in our freedom and our way of life. We did not expect, nor did we invite, a confrontation with evil. Yet the true measure of people's strength is how they rise to master that moment when it does arrive. 10 years ago, our nation was attacked. The symbol for our trade crumbled before our eyes. Hundreds of brave firemen, policemen, having seen that, ran into the fire. They ran into the fire. The streets of Hammond are too crowded with angels tonight. There are students and our teachers, our parents, our friends. The streets of Hammond are too crowded with angels. But every time we think we have measured our capacity to meet a challenge, we look up and we are reminded that that capacity may well be limitless. This is the time for American heroes. We will do what is hard, we will achieve what is great. This is the time for American heroes, and we reach for the stars. God bless their memory, God bless you, and God bless the United States of America. Now, we need to remember, in this day and age, as people continue to play politics with our police and fire, they are the brave souls that willingly put their lives on the line, that willingly run into burning buildings for our safety. Let's remember this next time we're gonna play games with our citizens' lives. And let me just close with this. With respect to the RBA, I invite any of you to ride that brown route with me. I invite you, when you show me a sign in our entire city, Homewood Avenue, Calumet Avenue, Columbia Avenue, Indianapolis Boulevard, 165th, 173rd, show me a sign for the buses. There isn't one. Show me a phone number to contact. There isn't one. Show me the accessible bus shelters. There aren't any. I've come to you before you handed our transportation service over, I've told you how they have failed, and I continue to tell you, so I urge you to do the right thing and join me on a brown route from hell and see where it doesn't go. Thank you.
Next speaker is George Stoyer.
First off, I'd like to thank Councilman Markovich for, I guess, bringing me up to date somewhat on the ordinances and the city budget. I, I, well, that's relevant news. I was more concerned about your concerns about revenues. Are we gonna have enough revenues coming in next year? But that's another, another day. I'm kind of concerned since the, for the past couple months here that, and I really hate to bring this up, but it's bothering me, and there's this authoritarian air when we come into this chamber here. We have a new sergeant-at-arms or bailiff or security guy here, policeman, and the first thing he says, and there's what, not even 20 people here, that, hey, you can't speak, you can't do this, you can't do that, otherwise you're out of here. That's bull. I want to see chapter and verse. This is not the Third Reich. This is not a court of law. This is a council chamber where persuasion, human reactions are part and parcel of this process. Now, I know that I can't say anything, but ever since George Van Gill came here and Councilman Anthony Higgs got all flustered, or maybe it was before that during the primary, I'm sorry. Now, I understand, he probably has, he has a cause, he has a reason to be somewhat upset, but what I fear is the arbitrary opinions of you people as human beings sitting there clothed with your office suddenly arbitrarily laying out what's gonna be the law of the land here. Whoa, uh-uh, it don't work that way. There is, I'd like to see some rules posted on the door, like Luther's 95 Theses if need be, about what is proper decorum explicitly so we can read for ourselves, and this poor man here doesn't have to have me go off on him, or you, or anybody else, sitting there trying to dictate how things are gonna be right around here. I don't know, it ain't gonna happen. So I don't know what's going on here. I don't know what happened to this city, what happened to this chamber? Suddenly, all this, everybody's got authority. Everybody's coming down with a hammer. Well, you're gonna get resistance, guarantee that.
Thank you for your opinion.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Quickly, I'd like to address the most current series of events, which is nothing more than a bullet point, it seems, into a longstanding tradition for this council not to act as the checks and balances in this particular government unit. The council's responsibility, besides fiscal policies, is also to act as a check and balance on the executive division of this city, and it seems like what it does is do nothing more than rubber stamp or approve whatever the executive division wants or directs. I mind you that all of us, including myself here, filled out the back of this CAN 22 form when we were all sworn into office that says I will faithfully and impartially and diligently I mind you that all of us, including myself here, filled out the back of this can twenty-two form when we were all sworn into office that says, "I will faithfully and impartially and diligently discharge the duties of my office according to law in the best of my ability." This was more recently exemplified in the, uh, state legislature adaptation or modification of the law with regards to handgun possession in city buildings. And obviously, there was a significant liability and exposure that was left to the citizens of Hammond for which all of you are elected or appointed trustees for the best interest of all the taxpayers. So as a result, what had happened is rather than securing the citizens against potential financial liability and disaster, you've opted to, in fact, support the decision in some outrageous and bombastic philosophy that our city CEO took with regards to the Second Amendment rights, and consequently left the city open to lawsuit with triple damages. And what happened? Couple days later, the exact thing that we were warned about, there was a lawsuit filed. Now, again, this is a long list of situations in which rather than independently taking an impartial and personal viewpoint and weighing all the facts on the matter, we've turned around and supported an arbitrary situation which resembles shoot first or act first and think later. The responsibilities are clearly spelled out in the oath of office. You can either choose to acknowledge them and act as trustees for all the taxpayers and citizens of Hammond, or perhaps you should look for some other opportunities. Thank you.
Can I get a motion to conclude this meeting?
Make it.
Motion to adjourn.
Drag it.
It's been motion by Councilman Salinas and second by Councilman Opinkar that we adjourn from this meeting. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes.
I did it for you, Claude, because you had.
Well, from that perspective, you may have.